Good evening, welcome to the workshop session of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. It is 6:04 PM. We have a quorum present with Councilmembers Mackenzie Carney, Gaye, and so we'll get started. And the first item is a special event permit. Ms. Clerk?
First item is discussion on a special event permit for the Historic College Park Neighborhood Association Yard Sale by the Historic College Park Neighborhood Association on October 11th, 2025, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM in Wards 1 and 3. This item is requested by Queenie Brown, Deputy City Clerk.
Good evening, Ms. Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and City Council. This first special event is, of course, the Historic College Park Neighborhood Association Yard Event. Can't tell you how long it's been. I know it's been here for the past four or five years I've been here. With this event, they're not asking for anything. They're just asking to put up signs throughout the city as well as the right of ways. And of course, that goes against our ordinance, which is why it's for mayor council approval.
Any questions, Mayor Pro Tim? Councilmember Carr?
No questions.
Councilmember Arnold?
No, no questions.
Councilmember Gay?
No questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. And then the second one?
Next is discussion on a special event permit for ITL.
ATL.
ATL, pardon me, Halloween Community Day Festival on November 4th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 6:30 PM in Ward 1. This item is requested by Queenie Brown, Deputy City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. This is the second event for ATL. This is a restaurant on the back of College Street. It's coming for you because it's a road closure, so it'll be from Harvard to Columbia on that main street. I did do the liberty of contacting the businesses on that location. Out of the five, I was only able to contact four. I'm waiting on Pink Ice Salon to give me the go ahead, but everyone else is okay with this event. And of course, the warehouse will power and water sewage right there, and they're okay with utilizing the exit and entrance on Harvard Point, so that it's not blocking anything. Two police cars will be requested on both sides of Harvard and Columbia to monitor traffic in and out.
Any questions, Mayor Pro Tim?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Carr?
So this isn't on, this is, okay, that's the Saturday.
Yeah, there'll be November 1st, that Saturday.
All right, okay.
And like I stated, with the businesses, they are able to park at the public safety complex, and if they need anybody coming through the police station right there.
Any other questions? Councilmember Carr, any other questions?
No.
Councilmember Arnold?
No questions.
Councilmember Gay?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Queenie.
Agenda item three, presentation on the scope of work and memorandum of agreement for the South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan and the City of College Park Participation Presented by Lenees Lyons City Planner.
Good evening, Ms. Lyons, how are you?
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, good. We have a short present slideshow to present. So the Atlanta Regional Commission and the eight cities that comprise South Fulton have started an update to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is the plan that we use, well, we use T-Spot funds for. We also set out a framework of future transportation that may be regional in nature or broader in funding and scope than our T-Spot will allow. So this sets us up to be able to apply for federal and regional transportation funds. So this is an update to that plan that I believe the last one was done around 2020 or 2021. And so the CTP recommendation would serve as that foundation for future requests. Projects that do not require state and federal funding may be included in our general T-Spot program. Next slide. And the following slide is showing the general area of the South Fulton area. And you can see the cities that are included are Chattahoochee Hills, College Park East Point, Fairburn-Hateville, Palmetto, South Fulton, and Union City. And then on the next slide, you'll see the project types that are included. These can be for bicycling, pedestrian amenities, trails, roadway asset management and resiliency, roadway expansion, roadway transportation system management and operation, transit expansion, and transit management, and other emissions-related projects. So things that help maybe clean the air in places where we know that we have a lot of truck or vehicular congestion. These are the type of projects that our Comprehensive Transportation Plan will include and kind of plot out a plan for us to move forward with doing some of those things in the future. And next slide is from our previous, our current transportation plan. Three goals that came from that are to provide safe and reliable mobility options for all, two, to provide connected and reliable transportation systems that operate sufficiently, and three, promote economic growth in Southern Fulton and Metropolitan Atlanta Region. Some of the T-Spot projects that we have use T-Spot funds and federal funds or ARC funding for us. Virginia Avenue, public safety pedestrian crossing at four locations, and that was with AWCID, the pedestrian bridge, and other maintenance and safety enhancements around the City of College Park, like resurfacing the roads and things like that. And so the next page is a discussion, is a kind of a layout of our financial commitment. Should we choose, should the City of College Park choose to move forward with the Southern, South Fulton Cities for this Comprehensive Transportation Plan update? The total cost projected for the plan is $1,237,500. The federal match is $990,000. The local match between the eight cities is $247,000, and that's divided up. Our portion and everyone else's portion is based on a population from our 2023 census. So the biggest would be South Fulton with 50%, and their share would be 110,000. Us, we're closer to 6% of the population of South Fulton. So our financial obligation for our population would be $15,427. The Atlanta Regional Commission would manage the funds and the plan. We are currently in the phase right now of working with the other cities to define the memorandum of agreement and the scope of work for this undertaking. They are requesting that we have that work completed. And if we choose to move forward as a member of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, have the funds obligated or have a resolution to have them obligated by October 30th of this year. So this, I got this, was notified this probably about three or four weeks ago. The cities have already been meeting. I've started meeting with them as well. Our city attorney has also been involved in those as well as our city manager. In understanding what the scope of this project is, our obligation and what kind of projects or what kind of role each city would have in this plan. So the last page going on, our next step starts to continue meeting weekly. I believe my next meeting is, this might be bi-weekly, but I believe the next one on my calendar is for next week. And we're continuing to refine the scope and the memorandum of agreement. And as I said, participating cities to provide authorization of their local match to ARC by October 30th. In your packet also should have been drafts of what our current memorandum of agreement and scope of work are, but they are still actively being worked on. These are living documents that have not, nothing's been set in stone yet. But everything that's been available to me, I provided to you for review at workshop agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, thank you again, Ms. Lyons. We appreciate this. I'm excited about this plan. It sounds like we're moving in the right direction here. Question I have for you, when you all are having the meetings, does it seem like the buy-in from the other? This is a multi-municipality project. Are we pretty much, you're pretty much getting the feedback that everyone is going to buy into that $247,000?
Yes, every meeting, well, every meeting I've been to and all the correspondence I've been on, every municipality that's represented there is, no one said that they're against it. The focus is really on refining that program so that it feels like everyone's getting what they need for the municipality out of it, as well as, you know, thinking on a regional level with all of us together.
And of course, I have no problems with the program. Just was wondering, in terms of the financial responsibility, we're looking at about a little bit over $13,000 coming from College Park. So if everybody does their share, we should still be there at that amount. So that was all. But thank you so much for this, and thank you for the PowerPoint.
Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Good info. Obviously, we want to participate and be a part of this. I'm very concerned in terms of how we're going to handle things south. I think some of our roads have been underbuilt. State Route 6, there had been talk with GDOT about a truck lane coming up all the way from Doorville and further out. And I'm hoping some of that stuff's going to be in this comp plan, and hopefully we can find some funding regionally for some of this stuff. But I do want to know when you have the meetings. I'd like to sit in on maybe one of those meetings. You know, when we divided the lost, I was at the table twice. First time about 10 years ago, I was Vice Mayor, and Jack was out of town. So I voted on behalf of us and the other mayors then. The second time was when I was County Commissioner. So it's important when the pies, you know, when the pie's divided up, that everybody's at the table. And yeah, we definitely want to participate. I think this is a no-brainer.
Yes.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. The $15,427, I know that you mentioned that they'll be looking for us to have a resolution or committing the funds by that time. When are they actually due?
They're due to be committed on that date now. As far as invoicing goes, ARC will invoice each of the cities. It doesn't go to like a pile. When they're ready to draw down, they will invoice us, invoice each city directly.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Gay?
The only question I have is, does this adoption prevent us from going to ARC for other funding?
No, not specifically. I don't believe it will prevent it. I think aligning it with, if there's a pot of money bigger than ARC, that's what it would more position you for. I think you have things in place that it wouldn't disallow you from reaching out to ARC for funding.
So, Ms. Lyons, I do recall the process that went, that we went through for the 2020 Southern Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and it was extensive. And everyone participated. And I wouldn't anticipate that there would be any issue because we came out with a hundred-plus-page document about all of the priorities within each city. And I'm just looking at the executive summary here for that plan that was approved back in 2020. They had six project management team meetings, five stakeholder committee meetings, a mayor charrette, a bus tour with the project management team, stakeholders and local elected officials, 10 one-on-one meetings with cities, GDOT, and MARTA, and 16 presentations of city councils. They were all over the place, really. I mean, throughout the Southern Fulton region to making sure, to make sure that they were getting input, not only from elected officials, but from the community at large. So I'm looking forward to this update and how we can all work together to make sure that we are looking comprehensively at the transportation in our region. So thank you so much for your support in this and your leadership in it, and look forward to the outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item four, presentation, Wise and Well Initiative in College Park, presented by Hospital in Your Home, sponsored by Mayor Pro Tim Jamel Mackenzie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do have a presentation. I am going to start by giving a brief overview, and then I will pass on to my colleague to give the presentation. My name is Novella Tasco. I'm the CEO and co-founder of Hospital in Your Home USA. My background, before I becoming a healthcare executive, I spent over a decade in this here community working as a registered respiratory therapist, providing direct patient care to patients at South Fulton Hospital. I later earned my Master of Health Administration and a Juris Doctor with a concentration in health law. And I've spent the last 15-plus years designing, implementing, and scaling programs that tackle health disparities, improve outcomes, and build community partnerships. My work has spanned everything from value-based care, health equity initiatives like the Health Enterprise Zone, and even Executive Director of a long-term care facility focusing on improving care for older adults. I have also written grants, and I secured funding at the legislative level for community health initiatives. And I remain laser-focused on creating systems that allow people to age with grace, dignity, and support at home and in the community. So I'm proud to be here tonight, and I want to share with you what is more than just a program, but it is a meaningful opportunity for the City of College Park to lead the way in how we support our elders, not just live longer, but to live well. Wise and Well, Thrive at Any Age, is a city-focused initiative designed to improve health outcomes and quality of life for older adults in all four wards of College Park. The goal is simple but powerful, to help older residents age well, live well, and thrive in the comfort of their own homes and in the heart of their community. But this isn't just about education or events. Wise and Well is built on three core pillars. One, connection to resources. We bridge older adults with essential health and wellness services, preventative screenings, medication management, fall risk reduction, and caregiver support and more. Two, care coordination and direct services. Through our existing clinical model, we provide chronic disease management, remote patient monitoring, and even in-home nurse visits, particularly for seniors managing conditions like diabetes, hypertension, and heart disease. And three, community-based programming. We bring culturally relevant activities directly to the people in libraries, churches, community centers, parks, and housing communities. Our offerings will include healthy cooking demos, mobility and balance classes, tech help for seniors, and even walking clubs in places like Barrett Park. So this is not just a program, it's a movement. A community-wide commitment to ensure no older adult is left behind simply because they don't or can't make it to a facility or clinic. And we're not starting from scratch. We'll be tapping into existing community infrastructure, partnering with trusted organizations and spaces where seniors already gather, including local churches, HOAs, senior apartments, libraries, and civic groups. So why is this needed in College Park? Let's talk about why now and why here. College Park is located in District 4 of Fulton County, an area that has historically been underserved, especially when it comes to healthcare access. With the closure of key hospitals, including South Fulton and Atlanta Medical Center, there are now even fewer local resources. And while Fulton County does offer excellent programs, there is no dedicated initiative focused specifically on College Park's older adults, many of whom are not actively engaged in senior centers or traditional county services. And this matters because chronic diseases don't wait, isolation doesn't wait, falls, unmanaged hypertension, and missed medications don't wait. So we're losing precious time and quality of life for our residents if we don't address this gap together. So why, what makes this different and not duplicative? I want to take a minute to address a question that may come up. How is this different from Fulton County services? That's a fair and very important question. So let me be clear. Wise and Well is not designed to duplicate what already exists. It's designed to connect, coordinate, and amplify. In fact, I've already had a very productive conversation with Keisha Ferguson, the Director of Constituent Services in Strategic Partnerships for Fulton County District 4. She confirmed what we already knew. There's a dearth of health-focused resources in this part of the county. College Park is underserved in terms of direct, on-the-ground engagement, and that Fulton County welcomes partnerships like this to close gaps, especially in communities like ours. Ms. Ferguson and I are already in discussion to meet with the Commissioner and to explore broader alignment because they see this as not as competition, but as coordination. Wise and Well was designed to collaborate with Fulton County, with Atlanta Technical College, with local providers, community leaders, and neighborhood institutions. We're also partnering with Atlanta Technical College to serve as a partner in delivering programming and building a workforce development pipeline, training future caregivers, nursing, culinary, dental hygiene, and health science students to serve within their own communities. So this isn't a siloed effort. This is about collective impact and a shared vision for aging well in place. To ask a strategic $40,000 investment, what we're asking for today is modest in size, but mighty in return. We're requesting a $40,000 investment from the City of College Park to support a dedicated coordinator, someone who will organize and run the full program across all four wards, partner with existing city agencies and community organizations, connect residents to county, nonprofit, and clinical services, lead outreach, track outcomes, and ensure quality implementation. So let me emphasize, this is not full-program funding. This is not an open-ended commitment. This is a targeted investment that leverages our existing clinical structure and partnerships, and we're ready to go. With your support, we're prepared to activate immediately. We have the local care team, the clinical model, the program design. We just need the anchor of the coordinator to pull it all together and what you get in return. In return from this investment, we're bringing over $275,000 of annual in-kind value through staff time, equipment, screenings, chronic care services, and wellness programming. A fully coordinated care model that includes remote monitoring, chronic disease management, nurse outreach, a long-term sustainability plan through grants, public-private partnerships, and potential aging in place funding streams. So this is a multiplier, not a call center. We're planting a seed that can yield years of community wellness, economic development, and improved quality of life. So ultimately, this is about giving our seniors the support they need right here where they are. We want to reach the unreachable, serve the unserved, and do it in a way that brings the city, the county, and the community together. This is a replicable model, one that can become a blueprint for how other cities approach aging in place. But it starts here in College Park, and it starts with you. approach aging in place, but it starts here in College Park, and it starts with you. So we want to say to every older adult in the city that you matter, you're seen, and you deserve to thrive at any age. And so now I'll just hand it over for a short presentation with more detail specifically on the programs and activities.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Afrea Brown. I'm a registered nurse and master's, master's-prepared social worker. Um, I've spent the past twenty-five years of my career serving underserved populations doing this very work. Um, I specialize in case management and population health. First slide, please. So the Wise and Well program, it aims to be a city-supported program focused on promoting health, independence, and social connectedness for older adults. The pilot program will be implemented and launched, launched as a program coordinator-led model. Second slide, please. So why Wise and Well? This initiative seeks to address the fragmented resources available to seniors aiming to provide proactive support to prevent crises. Wise and Well will fill the care coordination gap by providing protective, proactive care and support. Next slide. So our vision is simple. It's to create an age-friendly community where seniors thrive independently. Next slide. The specific, um, goals are to improve wellness access and resource coordination for seniors by connecting residents to existing programs, conducting service and resource mapping, tracking outcomes by ward to guide funding, and to build a citywide coordinated wellness calendar, as well as build collaborative partnerships throughout the city in order to make this come alive. As the program coordinator, I will lead various, um, activities to enhance resource and wellness management through mapping and care coordination services across all four wards of College Park. Create a vetted directory, organize wellness activities, connect residents to resources, facilitate chronic disease monitoring or support through chronic care management and remote, remote patient monitoring, as well as track the engagement outcomes. Next slide. The pilot phase will be between October twenty, 2025 and March 2026, and the activities will include, as you, will include, as you can see here, neighborhood outreach and screenings, co-branded wellness events with existing providers. As Novella mentioned, nutrition and healthy cooking. We've talked about tech workshop for seniors, chair yoga, and other fitness activities. Um, we will also, um, work towards ward-based data tracking, prepare a summary report with outcomes and expansion recommendations, and again, partner with Fulton County and local nonprofits and the Atlanta Technical College, um, just to name a few. Next slide. This initiative will evaluate its impact through various metrics related to reach and engagement, health outcomes. Sorry, next slide, sorry. Um, the initiative will evaluate its impact through various metrics related to reach and engagement, health outcomes, social connectedness, and service access. Um, we will focus on measuring reach and engagement of participants through registration, intake forms, and tracking systems on a monthly or quarterly basis. We will also access health outcomes resulting from program participation through pre- and post-surveys on a quarterly, biannual, um, and post-program basis. Next slide. We will evaluate improvements in social connectedness through pre- and post-surveys as well as attendance records on a monthly, excuse me, quarterly and biannual basis. Um, we will also seek to analyze the access to services through referral logs, surveys, and feedback from our clients or participants on an ongoing basis, as well as monthly and quarterly. Thank you. Um, the pilot phase is designed to lay the groundwork for long-term sustainability and suspension, and expansion of the program. Um, we would like to position College Park for county, state, and philanthropic, philanthropic funding. Um, we'd like to establish College Park as a regional leader in the aging and well-in-place innovation. And Fulton County has already expressed interest in the program. Next slide. So the consent agenda item, we are seeking for the approval for the funding of $40,000. Um, we, we would like to serve all four wards in College Park, and it will also provide a program coordinator to lead mapping, coordination, and navigation of services. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Questions?
Of course, I don't have any questions because my questions have been answered, but I do have some comments. I really want to thank you ladies, uh, first of all, for Hospital in Your Home reaching out to me. If there's one thing that, well, there's two things that I'm passionate about, well, three, my city. Uh, but there's two populations that I'm totally passionate about, and it's our seniors and our youth. And just looking at, you know, I work with our seniors on a regular basis here in College Park, and we do a lot of activities for them, but one of the biggest concerns that they have is health. And, you know, they belong, they have different health, uh, programs that they belong to in terms of their insurance, but it's the personal connection. And I do want to thank you, Novella, because basically, um, what we were looking at initially was about a half a million-dollar program. And I was like, woo, let's start with a pilot. And you scaled the price down, but you're still offering that type of service. So I feel like we're getting filet mignon for the price of chicken McNuggets. So I do want to thank you. I want to thank you. Uh, this is very important enough for me to take my community enhancement funds for this pilot, and I'm looking forward to the, the way you all are organized even, the metrics that are going to come out from this, the needs that we're going to find even that we don't know that we need to meet. It's really important. So thank you again. I know we've had some opposition on this, uh, but you ladies are well able to handle this program, to handle it in a spirit of black excellence, and I want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Carron?
All right. Thank you ladies for coming out. Uh, great presentation, very impressive. Healthcare is a serious issue in all of our communities, especially nowadays, and, uh, we want to provide as many practical and, and measurable healthcare options that we can for the residents. So, uh, it sounds good.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Clerk, could you keep it up because I did have a question about one of the slides? Um, yes. Councilmember Arnold?
No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
No questions.
All right. Can you go back? How many few? Keep on going. I think it's the one right before this. Yes. Okay. So in regard to, um, the, the, the warm handoffs, does that, where, where, what kind of partners do you have, like, community partners, to make sure if someone has something that's beyond, um, this program's capabilities, where, where would they go and how would that work?
So a part of this program is doing the asset mapping and working in community partnerships. We currently are partnering with Atlanta Technical College and all of their disciplines and, and students from dental hygiene to culinary. A lot of the services that we talked about, we've been able to engage with them to support that, even to the point of providing mobile dental clinics to do dental screenings and the like, or leveraging transportation from the City of College Park to bring students, uh, patients there. Um, we also work with other primary care providers in here. We provide a lot of the services that we, uh, discussed in terms of community programming, and we'll work through the community asset mapping process to identify other community partners that can support this initiative.
Uh, how many hours will the program coordinator work?
Many.
Okay.
More, more than what's budgeted.
And what's, what's, what's budgeted?
So technically forty hours.
Forty hours. And in regard to, um, in, in regard to, uh, any, uh, issues with HIPAA? Um, if, if we're referring, for instance, if we, if we refer someone to you, um, obviously, what happens from that point? Does it, can you just sort of discuss making sure, protecting people's information? All that good stuff?
Yes. So before we provide services to any of our participants, they have to sign a consent.
Okay.
So we have that form created for them to complete prior to us administering any type of service. In addition to that, you know, HIPAA is related to the electronic transfer of medical information. And so if, and if an individual is not, or a community partner is not directly involved in that patient's care specifically, that information would not be shared with them. Um, in addition to that, whatever, whatever partners that we have, we will absolutely have business associate agreements with them as well. So we will certainly cover all of those privacy and compliance concerns.
All right. Excellent. I mean, I think it's a great program, and I think, uh, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to go that extra mile for our seniors. So appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Next agenda item, Presentation, Apparatus Replacement Schedule via Lease Program, presented by Sterling P. Jones, Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Um, we have a brief presentation to kind of guide you through the leasing program. The purpose of the program is to kind of go away from the standard practice of purchasing fire apparatus and go into a leasing program. So I have with me, I have Tom Widmer and Jeff Amlong, and they're going to kind of navigate the presentation and kind of give you some, uh, information for your purview. And if you have any questions after, they'll be here as well. So.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jeff Amlong. I represent 10-8 Fire and Safety with Pierce, dealer for the state of Georgia, Fire Apparatus.
Hey, good evening. I'm Tom Widmer, and with Pierce. Yeah, could get the first slide up. So I want to walk you through the concept of the turn-in lease. So think of it as a loan with an end-of-term balloon payment, okay? So what we do is, the end-of-term balloon payment is residual value for the fire truck based on the years of use, specification, the miles you put on it. So simply, what you're going to do is you're going to, kind of, a little bit like a car lease. You're going to use the truck for like a seven-year period. Then you have the option with that balloon payment, the last payment, to keep the fire truck by paying off the balloon payment, or you can replace the truck. Pierce will pay off the balloon payment for you. We just take the truck back, sell it. Uh, you just do a fleet replacement program. So the logic of this program is, it's a line item, a fleet replacement program in your budget. So you're going to, uh, spread the capital cost of the initial purchase over time. The years of use you choose, and then you would have a new truck coming in to replace it, and you just enter to a new lease agreement to replace it. So that balloon payment is in there to lower your payments because that's residual value for the truck, and Pierce will pay that back if you choose to replace the, the apparatus. So what we do is, in the structure is, we, um, we match the number of payments to the years of use. And because the lead times that we have right now, there are two interest-only payments that are structured in there, and that'll enable you to match the number of lease payments to the years of use. However, Pierce has a very robust, uh, prepayment program. And so our bank partner, PNC Bank, they'll prepay the order for you. You're going to finance, in this pumper here, uh, you're going to finance $197,000 less than the cost. That's basically interest that Pierce is paying you to use your money. We're just discounting the cost of the truck. And so the prepayment discounts exceed the two interest-only payments that you would make in the lease. So you come out ahead in the structure. And so this concept is, locally, it's, uh, Henry County uses it. Fairburn, uh, uses the concept of the turn-in lease.
It helps you establish a replacement program without really having to have a replacement program.
Can you make sure you're speaking into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it, the, this actually allows you to have a replacement program without having a replacement program. The turn-in lease program becomes the replacement program. So the trucks don't stay in service forever and start costing more money than their actual value. Uh, we run into that every day where people are trying to fix older trucks, and it actually costs more than the truck's worth to repair it. So this allows you to enter into an agreement where the trucks will be here, use them, and then at the end of their, sort of, period of time, seven years is what we've quoted here, um, the truck will be automatically replaced. A lot of the warranties on the truck are five years, so it's covered under warranty for a longer period of time. You don't have the end-of-life costing for repairs and maintenance on the vehicles because you're always coming into new vehicles every second year. So this lays out the initial cost of the program, and then we would look at, um, the replacements for these vehicles as time goes on. Chief?
I think that's it. The, um, the benefit of this program is to keep a current program, current fleet. Uh, what we found out is that when we first got here, we had a couple pieces that were twenty-plus years old, and what happens is, it costs more to maintain it than actually was worth. Because every time it breaks down, you have to fabricate it apart. That's more downtime, there's more cost. This is the way you can keep some emergency equipment in service and available for use. So.
Yeah, they, we also are, um, talked to the chief about a maintenance program to go along with these trucks. So we would take care of the trucks, just like we do in Fairburn, for the seven years of its life. We would provide all the annual maintenance, uh, preventive maintenance for those trucks. That actually increases the residual value on the backside for the trade-in when it comes back around after seven years.
So Council, you have the presentation in your package, so you can kind of look at the specifics of it. And I know we're getting close on time, so we're going to leave, uh, five minutes for your Q and A. So if you have any questions, the experts are here with you to kind of give you the information you need to make a decision, hopefully, in the near future.
Thank you, Chief. Any start questions? Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, yeah, I definitely love the program. Um, I, for years, I leased cars. This is the first time, like, I've, like, bought a car straight out and kept it forever, but I'm getting ready to change that. Uh, so I do like that idea. And again, you know, we have the, um, the trucks, and as time goes on, there's new updates and upgrades. And we want to make sure that, you know, this is our public safety here, and, uh, we want our trucks to be, uh, state-of-the-art and updated. So I do like the, the, the concept. Is it possible to get out of a lease in less than seven years and kind of move and get it, like, say that four years from now, we want to change trucks. Can we, how does, what does that look like?
So we, we basically have the, uh, ability to structure it however you would like it. I mean, we could do a three-year turn-in lease, we can do a five-year, seven, uh, depending on the apparatus. I mean, I do make recommendations to the chief as to how long that vehicle should be in service. There is a national standard for that. Tells you how long vehicles should be in service. So, um, based on that and your usage of the vehicles, we make recommendations for that. If you wanted to get out of the lease, uh, that has something to do with the finance company, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That has happened. That has happened. We had a customer who had a turn-in lease, and they wanted to change, uh, their apparatus configuration. And so basically, what we did was, we just, you know, canceled the one lease, and, uh, there was a payment of the truck back. We took that truck back and just entered into a lease for the new truck. So we, we would go through the economics of that to see if it makes sense. Like, year one, year two may not make economic sense, but year four and five, it probably makes economic sense if, if the city chooses to change its fleet configuration.
Okay. But the seven years that we're looking at is kind of what we're interested in, Chief? Just a question for you. Is that what, that's what you're comfortable with?
Yeah, um, Terry worked with us as well. He was part of those presentations.
Okay.
So I'm not kind of speaking out of, out of a vacuum. So I had the finance there to kind of look at the specifics, and Jarell was in there as well. So, yeah, so seven years right now is kind of where we are, but in case we have to compress that a little bit and go to a shorter term, we'll kind of have to figure that out.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Carron?
Uh, sounds like a pretty good program. Uh, I like the, is there a combined, uh, discount for adding in the repair program as well? Right.
So, um, yes, we do discounting upfront. Uh, the company I work for, uh, it's a long-term company. We've been doing this for over, uh, actually forty years, and, uh, we do not overcharge our customers, you know, out of the gate. But the maintenance program would actually increase the value of the truck at the back end. So the vehicle, at the end of its seven years, um, the value would be higher as it's trade-in if it was under maintenance program. Does that answer your question?
Some of it. Uh, Chief, I'd like to see maybe a comparison in terms of current repair costs in terms, compared to estimated, what we would be looking at under this, uh, repair program as we go along. The big worry I have now, I know, you know, run-up time is years out, and, uh, I know, remember, we talked about the last, the, the, the long ladder that we bought?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, most of y'all weren't up here, but, uh, everybody, well, some of us were nervous about the purchase. I thought it was worth making the purchase when we made it at about, was it about, about, close to a million dollars? Nine fifty, nine seventy-five or something for that truck. And it took, what, two, three years for it to come?
Close to the four, I believe.
It was four years on delivery. So we purchased it at about nine seventy-five. So it finally arrived years later, but it would have cost, uh, what'd you say? It was about two and a half million dollars by the time it arrived, actually.
You got it at the bargain basement price. You cannot buy that, that same apparatus for that price.
That's right.
So that was fortunate, you were fortunate enough to, to move forward with that purchase at that time.
Well, I thought we, you know, put in the money now because I knew it was going to be more expensive if we waited. I didn't think it'd be that much more expensive, but I knew it was. The only worry I have is about the, this, making the lease payments prior to delivery. How does that work?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. There's two ways. You could, you could start a lease anytime between the time of order time of delivery. So we're showing you at the time of order because you get the prepayment discounts. You're financing a much lower amount. That generally has been the lowest cost to do it. It's kind of illogical when you think about it, but it's the lowest cost to do it because prepaid discounts are so high right now. As far as the protection, that's a very good question,